Okay, it is 5:30. If we could call the October 28th Emerson Department of Education meeting to term order, standing for the pleasure of the meeting. My pleasure, the lead.
Mr. Zappa?
Here.
Mrs. Gillis?
Here.
Mr. Engel?
Here.
Dr. Messer?
Here.
Mrs. Wackels?
Perkness to adopt the agenda as presented, including any agenda. So moved.
Second.
Any comments or questions? Hearing none, call the vote, please.
Mr. Engel?
Aye.
Mrs. Gillis?
Aye.
Dr. Messer?
Aye.
Mr. Zappa?
Aye. Hearing of the public? Yes. Mr. Coe?
Coche.
Coche back. You. Come up here and state your name and address, please.
Yeah, absolutely. I'm Tim Coche, 4310 Kingsbury Court. I'm here really just to make sure I get some more information about Treasurers Note 7H. Full disclosure, I work for the county auditor's office. Just trying to better understand the impact of the proposal here to... That affects inside millage to move to a permanent improvement fund. Leave Amelia and Michael, you guys had the pledge commission meeting a couple of weeks back for the county. I believe you mentioned that there's some things you guys are trying to do with this money, if I recall. I'm just hoping to understand further what you guys are trying to do. Again, like I said, full disclosure, I work for the county auditor's office, but I'm a resident, so I really want to understand what's going on. So I see that this is on the agenda. I guess my question at this moment is, will you guys be discussing what your intent is for these funds?
That was the hearing at 5 o'clock, but I would be more than happy to answer some of your questions. Again, full disclosure, David Conley here is our financial consultant from Rockville, he owns Rockville Financial, so he might be answering some of your questions as well. So the idea to move two mills of our 5.2 inside mills is to fund future capital betterments for the district. We, over the last nine or so months, had an independent architect/engineering firm with whom we've never worked before. I say that because our architect for the transportation centers in the audience here, GPD, but Fanning Howie is the architect/engineering firm that produced this capital assessment of our four buildings, just the buildings, nothing else. The school buildings, I should say. And I have actually, if you'd like to come over and get this.
Absolutely.
I don't want to watch in front of the camera.
Uh-huh.
This is a summary of the assessment. Yes, you can keep that. That is a summary of the capital assessment that Fanning Howie produced for us, and as you can see, it shows Priority 1, Priority 2, and Priority 3. You add all those up together, 7 million, 21.8 million, and 37 million. Obviously, it grows pretty quickly to a number exceeding $60 million in capital improvements. Now, I can't speak too detailed about the assessment tool that they use, but I can tell you that the costs that they come up with for capital improvements is based on the Ohio Facilities Construction Commission costs for this region.
Mm-hmm.
So they went through and they identified everything. Mike, help me out here. The building rap, they looked at technology, they looked at flooring, they looked at windows, HVAC, boilers, everything in the four school buildings, and this is what they came up with. The only way we could possibly begin to fund the capital improvements is to move inside mills. Currently, our valuation, the district's valuation, is 728 million, so one mill is worth approximately $728,000. So inside millage grows. It's the only millage that grows. Are you familiar with House Bill 920?
No.
House Bill 920 was enacted 40-plus years ago, '76, and what that does is it caps the revenue from voted millage. So as assessed valuation grows, effective millage decreases.
Right.
So we never collect more on a levy, a voted levy, than what we originally intended to.
Right, yep.
The only place that the school district is able to gain any revenue is on inside millage. Inside millage, you know, is 10 mills, unvoted, that is shared between political subdivisions in the county. We collect 5.2 of the 10 for the county. So as assessed valuation grows, we are able to capture growth also on new construction with the 5.2 mills. So we know that that will grow over time. Right now, a mill's worth 728,000. We believe that with the reappraisal, that our valuation will exceed 900 million, so a mill will grow to 900. Who knows what new construction will do in each subsequent year, right? So the intent is to move that millage now. Two mills is what the board has spoken of, discussed, and we would begin to accrue that in the permanent improvement fund to fund future capital betterments in the district.
Has there been any discussion about, instead of doing this, looking to your general fund?
Well, our inside millage does accrue to the general fund. It is reseeded in the general fund. Keep in mind that the five-year forecast, which will be produced next month for the board to approve, is all general fund and emergency levy, revenue, and expenditures. And I can't imagine putting in $7 million in the next three forecasts in the general fund. General fund is what funds the normal business activities of the district, so all of our salaries and our benefits, our purchase services, supplies, textbooks, and capital to an extent. But I don't know of a school district that's going to use $7.3 million worth of general fund revenue for capital betterments. Once that money is spent, it's gone. And if we are, for instance, in Priority 2, which is a period of three to seven years, which is part of the five-year forecast, current year is fiscal '25, and it goes out to fiscal '29, so we would have to assume that we would be spending nearly $30 million in general fund money in the next five-year forecast. And I don't know of a school district that can afford that from general operations. So do you have any other questions?
I know, this is just my grayish understanding of things, that there's a potential for the district to bounce below the 20-mill floor, which would then require a bounce up to or above the 20-mill floor.
Yes.
My sort of, you know, green understanding of that is that that could be an additional impact to taxpayers above what we might already expect from what's happened with the housing market and property values going up.
So right now, Class 1, which is residential and agricultural, values are 22.881288 mills, effective. If we were to move two mills, we do not bounce below the floor. The reappraisal is throwing us below the floor, okay? So in conjunction, right?
Right.
Because we want to move inside mills for tax year '24, for collection year '25, right? So those would be happening in conjunction, and it does add to the drop when you talk about it all together.
Right.
But just moving inside mills, we wouldn't even need to have the hearing, right? But we wanted to err on the side of caution, and knowing that the two could be happening together.
Right.
Reappraisal that could be pushing us down to, what, 17.6-ish, right? So it's already moving us down about five mills, just the reappraisal increase. We did learn last May, this last May, when we were at Moody's for the bond rating, that Class 1 would be increasing 30 to 31 percent. So we knew that back in May, that 2024 tax year, Class 1 would be below the floor. Okay? So anything else?
No, thank you so much. You answered my questions. I do appreciate it.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming.
Oh, no worries. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Coche. If you have any other questions, feel free to reach out.
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
Thanks, Amy, for that explanation.
I'd just like to say, because you've asked those questions, we've been working on this for the last three months. As I said, we started before school began in August. So we've been looking at this thought process, not just randomly. We've given the board, it's given a lot of thought. We've met six times on special meetings just to discuss this issue before we came to the point where we are today, knowing that we would like to get a conference this year. So it isn't something that we have just jumped out and done.
Sure.
We've given it a lot of thought. We've run all kinds of numbers based on everything that we've done, and as soon as we got that report, we started having special meetings with Dave there to make sure that we all understood the impact that it would have on the district, knowing that in the long run, it would be best for the district because we wouldn't have to go back to taxpayers for additional dollars.
Right.
Much sooner than we thought we'd have to with this kind of thing.
Yeah. Thank you for that, I appreciate it.
That's probably.
And part of the reason why I was here and just wanted to speak is because it's kind of twofold, being a resident, but also working in the county auditor's office, I just, I didn't care about these things five, six years ago. And now it's like, okay, this is happening in my own backyard, I want to understand this further, both just as a resident and as someone who's, you know, serving the taxpayers as well.
What do you do at the county hall?
I am the chief deputy of finance.
Okay.
So I'm over in the tax settlement department. You typically deal with it, my employees, Sonia and Carmella, but yeah, they, yeah.
I appreciate that.
Oh.
You know, I have to say, Tim, that I wouldn't really have thought too much about the district falling below the 20-mill floor.
And I don't know that that's necessarily something that anyone knows for sure is going to happen. I think it's a concern, which is why I'm asking, why I'd like to understand more. I don't think anyone knows for certain, though. I think it's out there as a possibility, and if it's a possibility, I think one point of view, and I get how you guys are looking at it, you guys have been talking about this since May, you have two things coming together that unfortunately potentially could mean very impactful things to the taxpayers. That's why I'm trying to understand it a little bit better.
Right.
Yeah. Thank you. Thank you very much.
下一个
Next slide. Okay, so you all received the financial exhibits, and you also received a hard copy of the recap, summarized recap. Just to summarize it for you, revenue is nearly 2 million more than it was two years ago in fiscal '23. Expenditures are more than 1.8 million more than last year, and the cash balance is 2.24 million less than last year at this time. On the bottom of the recap I have provided for you, an explanation about some of the material changes on some of the lines and revenue and forecast. You can read that and let me know if you have any questions. You see this technically every month, so I try to point out any anomalies or material changes from the prior September, in this case, or the prior year-to-date. So let me know if you have any questions about that. Next slide. Here it is. You can go back, go past that. And then just an update, what's going on in our office. The financial statement preparation is nearly complete. Those are due at the end of November, and we did really well getting everything to the GAAP financial team a few weeks ago. And then the financial audit for last fiscal year, fiscal '24, is underway. Julianne McGrew is our new independent public accountant. They were here last week, two days. We continue to push them financial information. It's a little more rigorous this year. I think Auditor of State's office was here for six years auditing us, and they put it out to IPA, which is an independent public accountant. So we're having to give them additional information from the prior year, so like fiscal '23 compared to fiscal '24. It just makes it a lot more time-consuming for us to produce the audit documentation for them. Next. So just an update on the Auditor of State fraud training, that is for all regular and substituting employees of the board, must be completed by November 29. We have about 120 to 150 substitutes that we still need to reach, and just a few regular employees. So that's done, gone really well with the use of group trainings. And what am I doing this week? I'm trying to produce a five-year forecast to discuss a capital conference. Speaking of which, capital conference is November 10 through the 12th. You have an information packet at your place. All of your reservations for hotel and dining and vendor receptions are in that folder. If you have any other questions, let me know. I believe a few of you don't have this document, the day-by-day, time slot by time slot. I'll copy that for you all. Next slide. Would you like me to move on to the recommendations?
Sure, absolutely.
So as I had said last week, an update to the board, there's some regular, typical things you see on the Treasurers' recommendations, and then there are some atypical ones. Typical is the regular board meeting minutes from September 23rd and a special meeting from the 30th. That was a taxation policy planning meeting with David Conley here. And I would ask that you acknowledge the September 24 financials, exhibit 7A through D. Next slide. Three more regular items that you see, the then-and-now invoices. There's two of them. Again, that is just invoices that we received before a purchase order was created. That's not the way we're supposed to do it. And then appropriations revisions, there's three funds, special cost centers that need to be increased. And then we have donations. There's a lot of donations for the month of September, many of which are for common slides. Next. So then, these are the atypical recommendations, an amended tax budget, exhibit 7G, and a resolution authorizing reallocation of inside millage, exhibit 7H. 7G is the tax budget that looks exactly like you approved in January at the organizational meeting, and simply what we're doing there is moving two mills worth of revenue from the general fund down into the permanent improvement fund. So you'll see where those changes have been made. Then the resolution, exhibit 7H, it's lengthy, it's verbose, it's very prescriptive of what we're required to do and revise code, and that was prepared by Board Counsel Mike Sharp of Squatters, Patton-Bowles. Next. All right, close the end.
Second, Beth?
Any questions, comments?
I have some comments. First of all, I'd like to thank David for everything that he's done, okay, with us through this process of figuring out what would be the best interest of the entire school district from a millage standpoint, from how much money we would need going forward. I think that that has been timely, so I'd like to thank David for his time from that perspective. And then I have comments that I find interesting under the Enerfirst Junior High, making a donation for 1850 to pay the parent chaperones. I'm just curious when that happened, because I've not recall seeing a donation from the PTO to pay chaperones to parents before. Is that something that is a standard practice now, or is that something new? Or how, I guess I'm saying, how that all come about?
Well, I think it came about.
I was going to say, at that meeting.
Yeah. We were at the meeting. So that was the, I'm curious, I guess, we lost because of the, we just paid for our student, so to help, you know, financial.
The chaperones were told it would cost them this much to chaperon trip, and the PTO was going to pay part of that. Then they needed more chaperones to remove their students, so then because there were more chaperones, they couldn't pay a percentage, so then they had to come up with the money to pay so that they could have enough chaperones for the kids.
So I believe this, I believe it's a new, I believe it's a new change resulting in the last, like, two years because of the desire to take a lot more chaperones and have small groups. So for the last two years, chaperones have had their group of, let's say, what, 10 or so, maybe?
Yeah.
And then the students stay with that chaperone every time they go to a different site and visit, walk around, where for decades or more, students, when we brought them to the museum, they could just go freely about the museum with a few chaperones, staffing, principals, et cetera. So the desire was to change that and be a little more safe and secure with the students. And from what I heard, it was a phenomenal Washington DC trip, and everyone stayed with their, with their chaperone together, so now I don't know whether that the request, I don't know if man or more, you know, whether the request to help the chaperones, pay for the chaperones, was that like a request from the principals to the PTO, or was that from other PTO parents wanting to do that for chaperones, other parents, you know what I mean?
It wasn't, it wasn't the second, so it was more of, it wasn't parents as we'll say.
Well, my question would be, is the money that was, PTO money was used to pay for parents to go on the trip. My question is, is, I'm just going to use this as an example, was there somebody in the room that voted that got the money? Do you understand what I'm saying?
Right. I don't. Yeah, there was none. No, there was no vote.
And I think, clarify something, too. The PTO donation is reseeded to the '08 team, the principals' fund, Student Activity Fund at AJH, and the entire cost of the Washington DC trip is paid out of that '08 fund, right? So there's no general fund going involved.
Right.
It's not the money going to the parents, it is the money from people to pay the cost.
So did each chaperone just get a flat rate?
They all paid 350.
350.
350 to go on this.
I don't remember if it was 1850 or whatever.
Paying the extra, because the trip is actually $500 for us, but the chaperones were getting it lower. That's what they were told when they signed up to be a chaperone. They did pay this much to be a chaperone.
That's mean, so each one had a flat rate?
Yes. Each one paid the same.
The only reason everybody got up, or brought it up, was I want to make sure that what we're doing is on the up and up, because we had some issues back before when parents tried to use dollars from a fund.
Yep.
To go to pay for a trip, I'm not going to say what organization, but I just want to make sure that what we are doing is permitted to happen.
I think what you're talking about is when parents worked.
Yeah.
Different events.
Yes.
And so depending on how many events a parent worked, there was a different amount applied to the student's trip or whatever. That is not permissible.
For the student.
For the student, that is not permissible.
Right.
Right. This was a donation to the '08 team fund. All of the revenue for all of the trips for chaperones and students came to the '08 team fund and was paid via purchase order out of the '08 fund. Yeah.
All I wanted to do, because I just want to make, I just want, I don't want it to come back, but the parent would come back and say, well, I would have chaperoned if I didn't know that I was going to get 350 dollars.
All parents paid 350 dollars.
He's just making a.
But all I'm saying is, I wasn't a chaperone, but if I win that I got 350 dollars to be a chaperone, I'm going to come back to haunt the PTO.
I think the only reason it showed up now was because they found out that they needed more chaperones kind of last minute, and there wasn't time for the PTO to fundraise to do that, because it was like, you found out in September, they needed to pay this bill in October, and so, I don't know.
Well, it just jumped out at me, because I've never seen.
It jumped out at me, too, huh?
Yeah.
I like that you brought it up, because I saw it, too, and I thought.
So I thought I'm going to just ask.
Yeah.
I didn't know.
So, based on what you said, Martin, is the norm then for the money to come out of a PTO, or is that coming out of general fund?
Nothing comes out of the general fund.
It's the first time this has ever happened.
And this was a donation from.
Right.
Go ahead.
It's a donation from, well, you're going to say it right with the right accounts.
Yeah.
It was a donation from the AJH PTO. I'll put soup there. 1850 dollars was reseeded into the '08 team fund for AJH. All of the expenses, the trip, was paid out of the '08 team fund. And I guarantee you that AJH has a fabulous record of all the monies coming in for each parent chaperone and for each student, and I could produce very easily for you the purchase order and the check payment, all of that, all from '08.
Any other questions? Good. Call the vote, please.
Mr. Engel?
Aye.
Mrs. Gillis?
Aye.
Dr. Messer?
Aye.
Mrs. Wackels?
Aye.
Mr. Zappa?
Aye. G? Do we have a motion for G?
Do we do G separately?
Yes.
So moved.
That's two of them.
So moved.
Support.
Any concerns or questions, comments on G? Call the vote, please.
Mrs. Gillis?
Aye.
Mr. Engel?
Aye.
Dr. Messer?
Aye.
Mrs. Wackels?
Aye.
Mr. Zappa?
Aye. G? Do we have a motion for G?
Do we do G separately?
Yes.
Oh, so moved.
That's two of them.
So moved.
Support.
Any concerns or questions, comments on G? Call the vote, please.
Mrs. Gillis?
Aye.
Mr. Engel?
Aye.
Dr. Messer?
Aye.
Mrs. Wackels?
Aye.
Mr. Zappa?
Aye. G? Do we have a motion for G?
Do we do G separately?
Yes.
Oh, so moved.
That's two of them.
So moved.
Support.
Any concerns or questions, comments on G? Call the vote, please.
Mrs. Gillis?
Aye.
Mr. Engel?
Aye.
Dr. Messer?
Aye.
Mrs. Wackels?
Aye.
Mr. Zappa?
Aye. H? I would like to read before we make a motion, just that there's understanding. The Emerson Department of Education approved a resolution authorizing a real allocation of two mills of the school district's 5.2 share of inside millage to a permanent improvement fund commencing in tax year 2024, collection year 2025. I just want to make sure we, everybody understands that before we get into this resolution. So with that, I would take a motion.
So moved.
Second?
Third.
Any questions on H?
And I just thank David and all of us, the energy we have, the community is awesome.
We're pretty clear. Okay. Seeing none, call the vote, please.
Mrs. Gillis?
Aye.
Dr. Messer?
Aye.
Mr. Engel?
Aye.
Mrs. Wackels?
Aye.
Mr. Zappa?
Aye. Mark, for the moment, I turn it over to our team of CPG and GPD. Before I do, real quick, I'll make a few real quick announcements. First of all, football playoff this Friday for the first time since 2008, so the football team will be taking on Homestead Falls in Homestead Falls, so hopefully everyone will be there, should be a great candidate. Girls soccer, if you saw social media, are district champs, the first time ever there in Sweet 16, so congratulations to them. Their next match is tomorrow. It's in Dallas, Ohio, it's like an hour away.
It's on, they're on.
But if the weather's this nice, I think we're definitely going to be in their cheer month, hopefully get a good win, go even farther along in the states. And then last night, our cheer team went down to Columbus, and the traditional cheer got fourth place, qualified for state, I mean, qualified for nationals in Florida, and then the game day won first place, and so they are also qualified for nationals, so it was really, really exciting for them, so a lot of great stuff going on. Also want to mention real quick, because Amy brought it up, the, with the Fanning Howie assessment for our facilities. We have a facility advisory committee meeting on Wednesday in two days, so both Mark and Teresa will be attending. Tim, I'll share with you, because you're the only audience member right now, but we do have a facility advisory committee, and they'll be meeting on Wednesday.
Right here.
Yep, right here in this room. We are going to be going over this entire, not just the cover sheet, which you have the amounts, but actually like what's in there, what needs to be replaced, so that's going to go to the whole committee. We're going to go over a few other things as well as we move into the future and prepare for all these things. We'll talk about the Ohio Facility Construction Commission, and we're going to be working with them and the facility advisory committee over the next couple of months throughout We have a facility advisory committee meeting on Wednesday in two days. So, uh, both Mark and Teresa will be attending. Tim, I'll, I'll share with you because you're the only audience member right now. But, um, we do have a facility advisory committee and they'll be meeting on Wednesday. Wednesday. Um.
Right here.
Yep, right here in this room. Uh, we are gonna be going over this entire, not just the cover sheet, which you have the amounts, but actually like what's in there, you know, what needs to be replaced. So that's gonna go to the whole committee. Uh, we're gonna go over a few other things as well as we move into the future and prepare for all these things. We'll talk about the Ohio Facility Construction Commission. And we're gonna be working with them and the facility advisory committee over the next couple of months throughout this year. Uh, because there is a goal, hopefully, that, you know, you see sixty million on here. Hopefully in the future, um, OFCC comes to us in a few years and says, we're back on the list to get money from the state like we did for Powers. So again, I think a great goal will be if that happens, which, uh, I checked in with them, so the board knows, we're fifteenth right now. So fifteenth in line. So it could take a couple of years, but you know, the good news is if that occurs, we get to save money. You know, this sixty million might, might be cut in half, let's say. But that's still another twenty, thirty million that we are not gonna get from the state. We're gonna have to kinda make up in some fashion. So again, kudos to the board, Dave, thank you, Amy, thank you. But I just wanna share that with you since, also, we will be recording that and probably be putting it public. As part of our strategic plan, you know, we're trying to make everything transparent, make sure the community knows exactly what's going on.
Right.
So we'll probably be recording that meeting and pushing that out. And then just for the boards where also, on the Friday, November eighth, community update I do, um, it's gonna be a full, like special edition strategic plan update. So, um, in the last two months, Amy's met with her action team, Sarah's met with hers, I met with mine, David Delli's met with his, Mackenzie's met with hers. So they've all met with their action team. So we're gonna have a full report on all five major goals of the strategic plan. So that's gonna be a special edition out to the community on November eighth. So a lot of things are in the works, uh, that's why we have strategic plan. To make sure that all these things are aligned and making sense and we're communicating with the community, so. And I was gonna mention, thank you, um, one last thing is the band this weekend also got superior rating. Uh, is it how many years in a row? Twenty?
Oh, it's so.
Right, if you're.
They haven't told you, yeah, but even one of the band members weren't, weren't sure.
Yeah. It's been a long, it's been like twenty, twenty, twenty-six, I think maybe twenty-six years. So congratulations to their superior rating as well. They're having a great weekend.
Yeah.
They're having a great weekend. So kudos to all the kids and all the coaches and everything, so. At this time, I'd have, um, GPD and CTC come up. We have Kyle, Ian and Matt. We're gonna give an update about this project this evening. While they're passing those things out, you know, a year ago, the community supported us by approving our replacement levy to build a transportation center and make improvements to the stadium.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
And here we are a year later, we're gonna give an update. We're about to initiate all of these activities with the hope that a year from now, they will all be completed. So it's pretty exciting.
Well, thank you guys for letting us come.
It's okay.
By the way, congratulations to all your teams and so forth, it's pretty exciting. So what we passed on, I'll start, is document one is our GMP. So this is what Mike has talked about, your hard work. This is the first piece of the puzzle that, that we're bringing for you, to you for approval. This is for the purchase and installation of the home side bleachers. Um, the reason we're doing this separate is because of the lead time necessary. Um, normally this would be part of the whole project, but in order to get in line and get stuff bought and procured for summer installation, so it's ready for, for football season in twenty-five, we gotta do it now. So there are, there is a, uh, what was the word you used for your document? The massiveness of it, the, uh, I forget, I just couldn't say it. It's big, there's a lot of stuff here. That's, that's good contractor talk, it's big. There are a lot of exhibits here. I'm gonna take a second and, and kind of work through these on a very high level thing. If somebody has a question about an exhibit that I talked through, there are A through N in exhibits here. A lot of them don't, they won't mean much here in this GMP, uh, in future GMPs. And this is a great kinda to get you guys rolling. You guys have been through this with Powers and all that before, so. Um, so with, stop me at any point, I will talk fast. This all makes great sense to me. So I've done it hundreds of times, it, it doesn't mean the same to me as it does to you guys. So again, if I gloss over something and go through something that, that you wanna stop me on or you wanna ask or you wanna get in the weeds on, please do so. Exhibit, so what I'm gonna do, skip the first three pages here. That's the financial document that brings everything to the, the dollar value. It'll get explained further back in and then it gets brought forward to that front sheet. The front sheet is really the document you're signing to execute this GMP. So if you go to, it's about, it is exactly, not about, it is the fifth page back, you'll see Exhibit A. Exhibit A is the documents with which GPD put together to let us go out and tack when purchase these bleachers. Um, we, this was a little bit unique in the sense on how we did it, it was more of a, kind of a design assist. We reached out to the market and got parameters, we knew how many seats we wanted, we knew what footprint it took. Again, we kinda had to fast track it a little bit to make sure we could get the stuff we needed. So it gives you, there are several pages in Exhibit, Exhibit A. It's the actual physical drawing pages numbered out, enumerated there, plus the specification sections that were used and in our possession. Um, any questions there? Exhibit B. So Exhibit B is the, probably the second most important exhibit in this document. It's what we call an assumptions and clarifications exhibit. It really is the nuts and bolts and the meat and stuff that are behind what we're doing. It talks about things we include, things we don't include, things that are specific enough that are, that need to be called out. It, it talks about permits, who pays for permits. It's not something that we as the contractor do, it's something that, that you as the owner pays for. So it just kinda highlights those kind of items so that there are no confusions later on about, oh, well, geez, we thought the number included this or that, well, it doesn't. This, this kinda clears up a lot of that. Um, I, unless you want, I'm not gonna read through all of these. Again, if you have questions, I'm hoping you've already seen this document and kind of skimmed through it. Um, so that's Exhibit B. Behind Exhibit B are, are some, the quote and the drawings is kind of a supplement to this that we received from E and D Specialty Stadiums, which is who, which contractor that has deemed the, the best price and the best schedule um, for us to recommend award to you guys as, as part of this GMP. So in there are the, their quote on, kinda their nuts and bolts and what, literally their nuts and bolts and what they included, didn't include, how they frame it, what it looks like, how big the press box is, how we support it. All stuff that really doesn't mean much to you guys, but it's more of a contract continuing and how this thing gets put together and what it looks like. How many seats you have. So that's about the next four or five pages. You'll see some drawings and it shows you what their foundations look like, how many there are, where they're located. Again, stuff that's not important to you, but us from a builder and architect, this is what, when we're hiring them, making sure that we have a safe structure with a number of seats laid out appropriately in the right footprint. Talking really fast, again, don't hesitate to stop me if I get going too fast. Again, I've done this hundreds of times, it, it, it's all second nature to me. Exhibit C, the one behind, if you keep flipping back. So again, this is, this is a pretty simple GMP, it's got one item in it, the furnished installed bleachers, it's one lump sum. Exhibit C is probably the second most important exhibit in here. On a future GMP, like we come to you for transportation, which we're gonna do here in November, and you'll hear some of our other dates here. Um, you'll see this list will be quite longer, there'll be quite a few contractors on it, there'll be quite a few more bid packages on it. But this exhibit really what it does, it takes the contractors that we bid, the scopes of work we bid, it brings them all to one place, sums up the dollars and then puts the appropriate other stuff on it. The staffing that we as a CM bring to the table, the general conditions that we as a CM bring. It brings our fee and our CM contingency and all kinds of stuff. And then brings it to these numbers, which then transfer onto those front few pages, which I had you overlook for right now. We'll go back to those in a second. Uh, behind Exhibit C is our bid tab. So this shows you the contractors that we receive bids. Again, it's all o- open book from our end, the bids come to us, we control it, we vet the contractors, we make recommendation to you folks who we feel is the, is the most appropriate contractor. Again, there are decisions in this process that allow us to go outside of the lowest bid because the guy maybe has a better schedule. Or the product that he's providing is a better suited product for you. Again, in this instance, he, E and D is the low contractor, but they were, they were also providing what we thought was the best set of bleachers for what we're doing. Um, Exhibit D and E are the construction schedules. Um, this is an overall, they're, they're, D and E are together in one exhibit. Uh, they call it, we're following the, you guys heard the nomenclature a little bit earlier about the OFCC, the Ohio Facilities Construction Commission. We're following, this is their template, their guidelines that they do on all school buildings. So we're all familiar with it, we've used it, we've used it with a few folks before, so we, we felt it was appropriate to use that here. Um, why they have two exhibits for the schedule, I have no idea. But it's, so there's one schedule in here. It says, you know, you're starting work in, in the spring, late spring, summer, you're working in the summer, you're getting stuff installed. There's a lot of, a lot of bones to it, again. I won't get into the specifics of it, it tells you at some point, we're buying the bleachers, we're installing them so that they're ready to use for football season. Um, Exhibit F is a staffing plan. Typically in one of these, again, this deals with the CM. We've not grabbed our staffing plan with this because it's such a unique little package. When we go to put the overall GMP for all of the work together, you'll see a staffing plan from us. It's prescriptive on what we submitted on and what you selected us based upon. That was in May.
May.
It's an interesting interview.
May twentieth.
Yeah, that's right. So you'll see in a future one, a staffing plan will show who from our end, Ian, how many hours a month he'll spend and, and on what. So that was what was part of our original submission to you folks, again, in May, when you selected us as your CM for these two projects. Or one project with two pieces to it. Still good? I'm taking a breath here.
Okay.
Exhibit G, it's pretty important to us. Exhibit G is the summary work that we put together, which tells our contractors who are bidding on one of our bid package. So you'll see this is bid package thirteen A, which was the bleachers. It tells him, these are the things I want you to include. These spec sections, this scope of work, that, so he knows and we know that we're, we're, we're talking about the same thing. And when we have the bid event, we get these bidders and we bring them in to talk further about this summary work and expectations, because everybody's interpretation can be a little slightly different. So we bring them into the table, we sit them down, we talk about what we've told them to include. We make sure that they've included the right pieces, parts. They make any adjustments necessary so that when we're here tonight, we've taken any gray areas out of what we're presenting to you folks. So that's Exhibit G. Exhibit H, self-perform work, again, there isn't any in this one, which, everything is self-contracted, we have one contractor in this one. Exhibit I is a schedule of allowances, there are no allowances. J, schedule of unit prices, there aren't any unit prices. Okay, I believe it's the alternates that we bid. So we bid, we're in conversation with, we talked about three specific alternates. One was your visitor's site bleachers. We have not elected at this point to proceed with that. So you'll see on there the amount that was bid, we've not accepted that into the price. The last two, what's front skirting, it's, your bleachers come down now, it'll be a different configuration than what you have out there. They come down to the, to the edge of the track and it was going to be open underneath. So you'd be able to like, if you wanted to climb underneath. So they put a siding, a skirt along the front to kinda close that off.
Just like the blue here in North Ridgeville, you see the skirting at the bottom?
Oh, I see.
Yes, that's, that's like a.
Yeah, skirt. And again, it's just to close that off and make sure that nothing's climbing under, going under, blowing under. Kinda clean up, gives it a, gives it a more of a finished look. You could certainly do it without, most people like to do it.
Can I say this also, plus, unlike Ridgeville, I guess for part of it, um, you know, the bleachers will be next to the track. And so there's no like fence or walkway between, so of course you wanna clean, same pattern.
And unrelated piece, so we did that stadium, the North Ridgeville as well, and those are E and D stadiums as well, in North Ridgeville. So that's the same contractor, we're running fourth here.
I, I know that we've probably talked about this before, but are, are we having more seats in this, in the seating or are we saying?
Um, in, in the main bleachers, there's, is more, but you know, we have all those side, small bleachers and things. So, I mean, it's, it's a slight increase, but we, we, we did not let go overboard with, with seating. But there's three thousand, about three thousand seats.
And so what is happening with the old bleachers?
So when we come doing an next package, they're gonna be demolished, they're gonna be removed. All taken out, all foundations taken out, all new foundations put in amongst potential other work.
Hey, so I'm gonna play a gross card. Are those recyclable?
So, yes, they will be, but you, so how that works typically is that's factored into the price of the demolition contractor that we were talking. So one contractor, again, his bid may be a dollar. Well, this guy's bid may be nothing, because he says, well, I have all the scrap value and it's factored into his price.
Okay, okay.
There would be just, it would be a very, very difficult item to track that you said, oh, no, I want you to take them down and we're gonna save it and recycle it.
No, I was just curious how that would all play out, that's all.
The contractors would, would scrap that.
Okay.
The parts stay cooked. So last alternate, uh, was the press box. So originally with E and D, their standard press box was eight by forty-eight. So, uh, the size configuration didn't quite work with what you guys, what people told you were looking for. So we explored an additional option with them, which was an eight by sixty, which gives you five different rooms, which again, for different groups and how they use it. So that's the dollars that were on there, that was something that, that we heard from you folks that you wanted, so it's included in the price.
Okay.
Any questions?
So this one's gonna be big.
Yeah, correct.
Okay, so back to the alternates, so you said the visitor bleachers, because I see way back to the scope of work. Um, you have visitors, they bid and alternate ones, so you said alternate ones for visitor bleachers, this is out.
We have not, we have not, we have not pursued the purchase of visitor bleachers at this point.
So totally.
We're not doing anything on the visitor side.
Okay.
Not to the bleachers anyway, at this point. Any other questions so far? Exhibit L, uh, schedule of incentives. This again, something to, oh, hey, by the way, if we get done on this and we get done early and get this, that's, that's not how it work. We're gonna do the best we can to get you done as soon as we can. So there's, Exhibit L is nothing. Exhibit N is a schedule of locally funded initiatives. Your athletic improvements are one hundred percent locally funded, as will be your transportation building. So there are no other outside monies in this except your local funds. And Exhibit N, I don't understand what it is. It's a, it's a schedule that, uh, Excel spreadsheet schedule that the State of Ohio uses when you have multiple buildings to track those dollars, it's very confusing, very hard to understand. I think you need to be a, a proverbial rocket science scientist to understand it. So again, there is no Exhibit N included, this is a singular product. So we'll come back to the front. So the, the front, again, is, becomes the legal document that gets signed, which brings everything that we've just talked about in the back to the financial pieces forward. It talks about how the dollars get generated, it sums them up, you'll see all the little categories on here, the subheadings. It talks about what the CM contingency is, it talks about what the fee is. Um, on the back, there's a little chart that as we create new GMPs, it will sum those up as we go so that we always have a running total. It talks about schedule dates. Um, and then there is a signature page, which is required to be signed by the board president, the treasurer and CTC. And there's a lot there, I went through it pretty quickly. Glossed over lots of stuff. But hopefully you've understood what I've talked about, you understand why we're here. If you, if you have any other, many more questions, I'm happy to take those right now.
Okay.
Question, table, the article's due contract time. The substantial completion of the bleachers, nine thirty, point four, is it twenty-five? Or am I just reading?
This one's fine. Yes, that's a very good one.
I saw that too.
It is.
Should be done already.
Can we go back to Exhibit C?
Just, just first, um, with the GMP at one point three, you go up here with all these, you know, concrete to be determined, to be determined, to be determined. How, how do we arrive at this price if we don't know what those are? It's all to be determined.
I have an answer. You want?
Those amounts will be in the next GMP.
They will be in the next GMPs. So again, in an ideal world, we would have the whole package put together with available values. We know at a minimum, we have to do these bleachers. So through this environment, this was the best, most complete price we got at the time that was cost effective. It's in line with where we thought they would be in a big picture kind of a thing. So we have to bite this off now if we have any chance to get them done next summer. So we're, so.
We talked about this, you and I talked.
You and I talked about this, about the labor and all of that. So you're going to see really three GMPs for this entire project. First one's for the bleachers. We had to do that because of the lead times, right? Then the next one you're going to see is the GMP for the transportation center. You'll be approving that on or around November 13th. And then the next GMP that you'll probably see in late January is for athletics, all of the athletics upgrades that are designed for the project.
It's all on this calendar already.
Yes. So we've worked, what we've done is we've worked to a total budget. We, so we know kind of total dollars we're at. So we're biting off bits and pieces as much as, and wants us to bite off, and as much as Amber's can afford. So we know, like, this is one piece, then we'll come into the transportation, to Amy's point here in a couple of weeks, and, and say, hey, we're coming to do another GMP for X. Multi, it's going to be multiple million dollars for the transportation facility. And then what's left is what will, as a group, decide that we want to do with athletics. What more is on that need list? And if there's money left, it's what can be on the want list.
Right. I understand that. I guess the question I have, okay, so does exhibit C just address bleachers? Or are we addressing all three phases when we get to the be determiners?
So for GMP one, exhibit C just addresses the bleachers.
Okay, so go, so let me go back to my original question. How do we come up with 1.3 when we don't know what these to be, to be determined costs are?
Because 1.3 is just how much it costs for the bleachers.
That's just the bleachers.
That is the cost of the bleachers.
So 1.3 is not the total cost?
No.
That's going to cost us to install the bleachers.
So 1.372 is the total cost?
It is.
For the GMP.
And this is a guaranteed maximum price agreement for the bleachers for $1,372,000.
Regardless of what concrete foundations are, masonery is, electrical is?
Correct.
At the end of the day, we're paying 1.3.
Yep.
Regardless. And even if we go into the contingency.
Yep.
All right, thank you.
And I'm, my apologies if I didn't understand that question.
No, I, like I said, I was just trying to, you're going to back it in, I guess.
There'll be other numbers here. Again, next GMP, the concrete foundations and concrete work will be another value. What you'll see, the 3A, the 4A, all those other packages will have values in a future GMP that we'll bring back to you.
That we'll have to then approve, and then that'll chew off the other athletic stuff.
Yep.
That'll be the last one.
That will be the last one. So what's, what we're doing?
The building will be perfect.
The transportation was always, here's what we want to build, and then kind of what was not left. That doesn't sound right. But, but the budget that remained was how much were we going to spend on athletics? So we know that this was going to be a piece of that no matter what.
Right.
So that we're carving out too. We'll go to transportation next. So then now we, we've taken two bites out of the apple, and what's remaining on the apple to go for the rest of the stuff.
Yeah, that's the numbers. That's how we need to see it.
Does that make sense? So we, so you'll, we'll be back here in another, well, our goal is to have numbers and information on the transportation GMP for your board meeting, I believe, at the Capitol Conference on the...
We won't be approving anything at that meeting. It will have to have a special meeting that week around the 13th.
You're welcome.
GMP, good?
Good.
That's great.
Ian will talk to you a little bit about where we're at. So, I've hit on a lot of where we're at, what's going on. He's going to find that in a little further detail for you so you can kind of see, like, we talked about that next GMP for transportation. You don't kind of enumerate on here.
Yeah.
So not nearly as good looking or as fast talking as me either.
Hey, don't pick on my fellow project man.
So just put something, just a rough or high level overview here. Flip to the second page, transportation, where we're at. Right. Obviously, our pre-construction phase is complete. We finished the project, so we've got to receive bids mid- mid-October here. Right now, we're completing those contractors' open reviews, like Matt talked about with how we've vetted, you know, the contractor we recommended here for bleachers. We're, we're doing that with all the different trades right now, plumbing, electrical, so forth, for the transportation center. So like we talked about in November here, you guys bring that GMP in front of you as well for that transportation center. We're looking to start construction in January of '25. Right now, targeting finishing December of '25 as well, for the transportation facility. As far as athle...
Any, any questions about where we're at transportation wise or where we're headed?
All right. Moving on to athletics. Obviously, we brought the early procurement here for the bleachers due to the long lead time of materials. And then we're working with GPD through pre-construction phases as far as the, the next steps and the remaining portions of that athletic facility. So we'll continue through that here through November, getting construction documents. I think we're targeting early December and then bidding on in December as well. So we can be to you guys in January for that GMP approval as well. So we'll look to start that construction in, in spring. We'll work with your team to coordinate that for as far as when your events and stuff like that finish up. And then be ready in fall for, for football for that athletic facility. That was kind of rough, quick, but any questions overall?
Just a clarification. We're a little bit behind from what we had originally heard from the transportation. Because when we last met with you or you spoke with us, our goal was to possibly have that in the end of August or early, well, end of September. Is there a reason that we're going to be almost three months behind on that process?
It's been some permitting challenges and waiting on some zoning permits, and Kyle can probably speak to that a little better. But high level, it's been getting through the approval authorities, getting the responses back, getting on to the next step and getting zoning. So the final piece of the puzzle, I believe, is the zoning one, which they're anticipating in the middle of January. So that's really what's dictating kind of start. The work is the work. We know it's going to take a year, 11 months-ish, best case scenario. So it's about when we can start. So that's, you know, we were basing it on some assumptions on, hey, we thought we could have this stuff. Then it came back with a little more defined timeframes with some additional information that they needed, which have kind of pushed those things a little bit.
Yes, November 5th is the conditional approval for the site to be used as a transportation garage. It's a farming, I think. So that meeting will take place and we'll know where we're staying in the schedule.
That's the township, right?
Yes.
Yeah.
We're all planning on going.
It will be there.
November 5th?
Yes. Election day.
Election day.
We checked.
We verified.
Yeah.
So both are interesting.
Mike and Chuck and myself and Tia, Carl planning on going, and then Kyle.
Yeah, he'll be there. We've done some kind of behind the scenes work to feel out, you know, where we think it's going to land. I think that we heard there might be some pushback, but we feel confident it's going to last, so.
So what were the pushbacks?
I think the ones on the table were concerns with the road, things of that nature, just general, I mean, community concerns, but I think we have enough information to kind of squash that and make sure that.
Okay.
We're doing a light study, make sure we're not flooding the neighbors, and we're going to take that, just for additional coverage if they ask that question.
And you've ensured in the design that there is a barrier for noise?
Yeah.
Trees.
Yeah, there's a buffer in the design, trees. I mean, it's kind of set back in the site, and if you, you could probably drive by it, I know it's there. I mean, that's, I guess, kind of one of the things that came out of the wetlands being a problem, because we were going to site it more towards the front, and we pushed it back. So it's kind of just back there hidden from sight.
So what role were they concerned with?
Dewey.
Yeah, Dewey. Chuck and I mentioned to you, we already mapped out what the, what the routes would look like as far as leaving the facility. So how many are going left, how many are going right? Right, right now, the routes look like about 14 are going left, 14 are going right. And then from there, they split like, for example, on Park, then the Middle Ridge, and then another way on...
On Ridge.
On Ridge, yeah, yeah, yeah. So, no, we're not, we're not flooding the one road with like 20 buses there. Actually, it's really half and half, and then branching off from there. And really, in the afternoon, we even talked about, in the afternoon, where there might be traffic out of unity. You know, all the buses have to go to either Steeler or AJ to start the routes. So, I mean, they're pretty much, once they leave, they'll be leaving the township within minutes. Once they get to 58, they're, they're coming into town like they, they wouldn't start their run. So, so we, you know, we've worked on the routes and things like that.
Okay, nice. Thank you.
Next, next time will be more exciting.
Next time we want candy or something.
We'll have some pictures.
Eye candy, that's me.
Nice, nice, nice. That's a good comeback.
I'll bring my kids Halloween candy.
Do you want to put on the traffic study that you were doing? With that development on North Ridge, two of them, with the proposed GetGo and the other one, the housing development? That's going to put a lot of traffic on that road. Is there...
So we're not doing a traffic study.
Well, whatever you...
So we were doing a lighting study to show the flood, because that was one of the concerns at the meeting that was brought up. I think the community is concerned with our traffic, so the other developments aren't really in play for us.
Okay.
I mean, it could be eventually, but I don't, I don't see that. But they're concerned buses turning out on the road, causing damage to the road and things like that. A bus is generally lighter than like a garbage truck. We're adding 28, 28 different vehicles a day, you know, times two for...
It's just been mentioned to me as well.
Oh, I got you. Yeah, I mean, it's a, it's a great site. I mean, it's not a busy road right now, so, you know, turn on and off for a bus should be pretty easy.
Thanks, guys.
Yeah, thank you.
I thought that wasn't happening. I thought they couldn't get access after 58. So the last I heard, GetGo.
I was telling you, I was telling you a lot of the time, it's been five weeks. Five, five and a month ago, but...
Good night, gentlemen.
Was it done? Was it, was it over a month ago?
Oh, yeah. It's been at least six weeks or so that they said GetGo was not helping, because they couldn't get access to the state and access access on 58 Park. And they couldn't get access on 58 because of the white. Okay, that's, that was what I heard, six, eight weeks ago, probably.
I stand corrected.
It's not to be a new board that I...
You should.
But your new development happened that the president was aware of.
Well, thank you.
Thank you.
But I thought maybe you had more.
No, I, like I said, last I talked to someone up there that...
Sarah, it's us. It's my turn.
Like, it was my turn.
That's a nice report, Mark.
I guess...
Hey, Mark, my turn. Harris here.
Please, please, sir.
I was going to hand them out unless you all needed me.
No, thank you.
At your meetings, we had to stay.
Thank you.
I'll see, I'll see you guys.
You're dismissed.
He's the only, he's the only visitor at the board meeting, the special board meeting coming through. Great. Take it, John.
John, I appreciate it. Good, good.
I just have a few feel-good things I'd like to share with you. So the, wanted to kind of give a shout out to Lorain County Education Service Center. We've been working with them a lot on our wellness initiatives this year. And so pictures I have up there are our district-wide threat assessment team. They did a three-hour refresher with us. CSTACK stands for Comprehensive School Threat Assessment Guidelines that were created by Dewey Cornell at University of Virginia. And so they've, their wellness and success coordinators have been helping us with a lot of initiatives as far as aligning our social emotional supports we're providing for our kids, providing trainings like the CSTACK training. And they are also helping us with the implementation of our new wellness coordinator who has been selected and will be starting on November 4th. So Kelly Simonson is the individual. And so we are very excited to have Kelly back with us. I think her background and partnerships that she's created and the programs she's done when she was with Mercy Outreach are really going to pay dividends in this position. And so she's going to be working as kind of the bow on the package that is all of those wellness initiatives and, and working a lot with our parent family outreach stuff. So keep an eye out for, for more great things to come with that. Another thing is on October 16th, Amanda Sears did a fabulous job with an AI presentation. Learned lots from her regarding the difference between actual artificial intelligence and machine learning and different ways to, to use each in the medical field and all sorts of ways. But she, we had a lot of people that came, I was pleased, and she did a fabulous job as she always does. So shout out to Amanda. And then finally, our best buddies program is going strong in all of our buildings. But I just wanted to share, the high school did their best buddies connections kind of as the prom posels that have been a big thing, where, you know, you do a big like reveal with the, you know, will you go to prom with me? That's what they did for their best buddies. So the students that were, you know, assigned to a best buddy did a big reveal, and the one in the middle is, you know, the donut, it says, donut, donut say no to being my best buddy and things. And, and it just, it was, it was a lot of fun. So they've got some activities coming up here for the fall, and we're just really proud of it and how it's growing and taking off in the district. So, so just like I said, some feel-good things that I wanted to share with everyone. But that concludes my report, unless anyone has any questions for me.
Miss John.
Thanks, sir.
Thank you.
Here we are.
And little Mr. Rex.
Rex. Uh, the JBS board of meeting has not been held yet this month, because you guys moved yours, so we moved ours. Our, our board meeting will be this coming Wednesday, which is a real change for us, but we're not meeting at the JBS. We're meeting at the manufacturing wrap-up. So the board meeting will be Wednesday at 4:00. If you'd like to join us, the Kenwood and Sheffield Field, which will be also following that board meeting, we will be presenting some summer intern manufacturing thank yous from that perspective. And then following that, we are a part of the chamber who will be having the social so that everyone can make something with the manufacturing. So that's the update from there. The cookie sale is happening right now, so if you want cookies, you can log in and do it, because it started, I believe, through the end of last week. So I would say by Wednesday it will be over or so. So I didn't send you all the link, because I knew I'd see you all today, so I'm just telling you. Okay? If you have any questions? And if you'd like to go on Wednesday, let us know and we can make that happen. Registration ended a couple days.
We, we celebrate, we can't.
Yeah, okay. Mike, Mike's making us go to a different meeting.
That's because Mike never checks the calendar.
So all the meeting, short runs and...
Well, thank you, Rex.
No problem.
Board updates.
Okay, I'll try to make this quick. So the general assembly course, there are three sessions, but after election, after that, there will be four house sessions and five civic sessions. And there are many, many bills impacting education that are pending. Excellent, please. So one is House Bill 8 that is called the Parents Bill of... So one is House Bill 8 that is called the Parents' Bill of Rights. And mostly the slides I got from our legislative update from our board cabinet meeting I went to. Fall conference, so Jennifer, who I thank very much for giving these slides. She is our Director of Legislative Services. So anyway, this bill maintains that a parent can has a fundamental right to make decisions for their child and their education and their care. This requires public schools essentially looking at sexual education in schools. And parents have the right to review all of that curriculum pertaining to that content. And then can request alternative educational content if they do not agree with some of the course materials and instruction. Next slide, please. And House Bill 445, which is a hot topic these days, is pending in the House Primary and Secondary Education Committee. And it requires now, so it's just a single word change. Instead of the word may, it is shall. But it requires school districts, school districts more of the education to adopt the policy for release time. Course of religious instruction and everything else in the bill remains the same. So the students, parent, revenue, advice written consent for the student to be released during school hours for religious religious instruction. The sponsoring entity maintains attendance records and. The sponsoring entity must also provide transportation and assume liability. No public funds should be spent owing the needed instruction and no public school personnel are to be involved in providing the instruction. Next slide, please. And Senate Bill 295. It declares the General Assembly's intent to revise the closure requirements for global performing community schools in school buildings operated by a school district. And an interesting quote by Senator Brenner says that, oh, one of the things we haven't done and I think we're considering in the state is not just continuing the closure of those ineffective charter schools, but actually on our books, we can theoretically close ineffective public schools. So I'll just let everybody marinate on that. Next slide, please. So earlier this month, I did go down to OSBA offices and attended the board cabinet meeting where we spoke with the Associate Executive Director of Ohio, the OHSAA, so the sports people. Thank you, the Athletic Association folks, I'm not a sports person, sorry. Director Kristen Ronan. And she gave a legislative update dealing with all these athletics. So again, talking about not charging different ticket prices when you're paying for it. Even when you're taking different lessons of payment, whether it's online or credit and cash. Also, each school building in the district must have an A D. And that all teachers, administrators, coaches and trainers must have that type of training, knowing how to use the A Ds. House Bill 68 did take effect in April of this year. And we deal with gender identity from birth. And lawyers across the, legal teams across the state are advising school districts, of course, to speak with their own legal counsel about this. But they're, they are concerned about districts losing their funding. If, I guess you're abiding by people who identify differently than their children of birth. There are people to, districts to, you know, talk with their own counsel, if things like that. Across the, there's some issues. And, oh, and then we also talked about like name and image.
Lifestyle.
Yeah, like, so they are beginning to, OHSAA are beginning to craft regulations. I guess it's been like three years back and forth to talk to them. So and they're going to be talking with more associations like OSBA, VASA to help them craft regulations in lots of schools. Next slide, please. And we also spoke with the old director of the New Department of Children and Youth. And this was created in 2023 to help reduce duplicate departments and programs from our broad state government involving children and youth. And I believe the Department of Educational Workforce involves underneath as well. And they deal with all programs that involves pre-k, middle childhood education, early childcare and foster care, the foster care system. They are working on a new childcare choice program to help people in lower socioeconomic backgrounds with publicly funded childcare. And some other initiatives with Sunta Shaw Future Forum. And next slide, please. And so they started things from the fall conference. So they honor, you know, Purple Star Schools. They also honor our Northeast Region Teacher of the Year nominees are very, Mrs. Kennedy is one of them that they honor there. And one of, the actual Ohio Teacher of the Year, she's from Pittsburgh, school district, so she was our. And then our OSBA officers are here, so they give some marks. They encourage people to donate to the, there's a teacher book grant that they give to students who are pursuing early childhood education in college and.
Anything else?
And they, let's see. And that's it. So thank you, everybody. Oh, and there is for a cabinet conference, they do have the new app out. So you can download it from Android or the Apple Store to discover it, too.
And that's it. Thank you, thank you.
Personal recommendations?
Yeah, mostly items this evening are contract, you know, changes, updates, trainings and supplement contracts. The one thing I will point out is, because a question came up in item D, there's supplemental contracts for the winter. On the list is, is the mention of two volunteer gymnastics coaches. We do not have a gymnastics team, most school districts do not. But once in a while, we do have a gymnast who gets to the high school who is interested in competing for amateur or for any, whatever school they're from. So the two volunteers are her coaches in 10.0. But when we, when they do compete for us, we, we do still pay for like entry fees to the competition. Everything else is mostly on the student, so, so just, just so you're aware of that. Again, everything else is mostly contractual things and training. So I recommend personnel items A through L to the board.
You said second?
Same.
Questions? See, now we call the vote.
Mrs. Gillis.
Hi.
Dr. Messer. Mr. Engel. Mrs. Wackels. Mr. Zappa.
Educational recommendations?
Yeah, item A, we usually don't have an agreement with Tri-C, but we have actually from Mr. Ty, three to four students that are taking a math course together there. So that's why we're having this agreement for their college credit plus course. B, we were going to have a trip in 16 to, I think, what, Thailand, Vietnam area. We changed to Peru, so we're after the board approved the Peru trip instead. Also, C is a real quick awesome item. The E S C is hosting translation interpretation services for the district. There's been so many requests by so many school districts out there for that that they're going to host it. And then all of school districts, I want just they can by approving this agreement. We only pay if we use it. And it's a great service. We actually had a meeting, a super dense meeting where they pulled up, they actually got presented called, called translator service. The gentleman came up on a Zoom and was, was really, really cool.
You've used it several times, right?
Yeah, yeah, you can do it by phone, you can do it by actual Zoom if you want to see the person. And even, that's more costly, but even then, the highest cost is like 99 cents per minute. So if you have 30, you know, conference call with a parent, I mean, every language you could imagine, you know, 30 bucks to assist a family is just totally worth it. So really cool service. Real quick, D, the revised course fees for steel, I think, were the AP cost, I think, looking like 80, maybe some dollars to 90. But I did find out that for those students, a free reduced lunch, the cost is only 53. So that's, that's good news for students that, you know, a free reduced lunch is not high 90 dollar cost. And then real quick, the last one in there is the calendar. You know, we did a great job of approving the full like days of the calendar last month. This time, we want to be, I want to get on all of the open houses, conference nights, orientation dates, times. We have Steel and Nord, our other campus, Agent of Towers, need a little bit more time. So we will, I said, we'll prove what we have in with Steel and Nord. We'll just come back in November, do all the rest of them, we'll be done. No spring discussions, we're going to get it done in November. Okay? All right. So I'd like to recommend items 11A3.
Teresa. Second?
Same.
Questions, comments? Senator, can I vote?
Mrs. Gillis.
Hi.
Dr. Messer.
Hi.
Mr. Engel.
Hi.
Mrs. Wackels. Mr. Zappa.
Hi. Business recommendations?
I think we're doing these two items separately. So the first one is our payment in lieu of recommendation. That's for parents who, by the state, we're required to buy transportation to their educational facility, but they take the child job instead and take data for that. I will make a mention that I am looking at next year to possibly look at maybe bus route open door. We have about 50, 60 kids that go open doors. So we're, we're making payments to all those families for them to transport the kid there. Let's see if there's possible we can just provide a bus, which we wouldn't have to pay those parents. If they chose to take the bus, great, if not, then perfect. So, but we'll work on that for next year. So just recommend business, item 12A.
Teresa, second? Morgan? Any questions, concerns, comments? Call the vote.
Mrs. Gillis.
Hi.
Mrs. Wackels. Mr. Engel. Dr. Messer. Mr. Zappa.
Hi. B.
And then B, as you were aware from the presentation tonight, is the GMP for the bleachers at the stadium. I'll go in that.
Motion, second? Morgan again? Questions, comments? Call the vote.
It's good that they're, that they can talk about it a lot. It's just a lot.
Anybody else? Rex? You sure?
Usually always have a lot to say, sure.
Call the vote, please.
Mrs. Gillis.
Hi.
Mrs. Wackels.
Hi.
Mr. Engel. Dr. Messer.
Hi.
Mr. Zappa.
Hi. I believe there's no need for executive session, correct?
Correct.
Okay. Motion.
So.
Teresa.
What?
You woke up. Call the vote, please.
Mrs. Gillis.
Hi.
Mr. Engel.
Hi.
Dr. Messer.
Hi.
Mrs. Wackels.
Hi.
Mr. Zappa.